Before tonight's meeting begins, we will have a recent graduate of Destrehan High, Chris Nesbit, lead us in a moment of reflection. Following that, Ms. Becky Weber will lead us in the pledge. So can everyone please stand?
Thank you, God, for getting everyone here safely. Let our great board members make decisions for the betterment of our parish, and that we use this time of our summer to make improvements to our parish, so we set up our place for students to improve themselves. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll call tonight's school board meeting for June 14, 2023, to order, and let the record be known that all board members in attendance, along with our superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and our board secretary, Ms. Shelley Babino. The first item on the agenda is 2.01, a resolution in memory of Ann Ardwan. Ms. Boudreaux, could you please read that?
My honor, whereas Ms. Ann Ardwan served as a foreign language enrichment liaison for seventeen years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, Ann, be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mrs. Ann Ardwan its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the June 14, 2023 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Ardwan's family. And I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Seven motion by Ms. Boudreaux, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that resolution is adopted. Next on the agenda is 3.01, Board and Superintendent's recognition.
Students. Destrehan High School students were named to the All District Soccer First Team. Elvis Tercios. Employees. Satellite Center employee was named the James H. Maynard Teacher of the Year by the National Restaurant Association's Educational Foundation, Patrick Phalen.
At this time, if any of those folks that were recognized want to leave before we do the business portion of our meeting, you can feel free to leave, and we will resume in about a minute. Okay, the resumed portion, the business portion of our meeting, 4.01, is Board Meeting Minutes. At this time, the Board Meeting Minutes of May 8th, Committee Meetings, May 10th, Board Meeting, and June 4th and 5th Board Retreat is presented.
I have a motion by Ms. Weber, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 4.02, the Board of Trustees Renewal for the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund. Members of the Board of Trustees of the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund serve terms of a three-year duration. Subject to approval by the St. Charles Parish School Board at this time are the renewal appointments for Mr. Al Sufferin and Mr. Emile Saint Pierre for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. The St. Charles Parish School Board is the overseeing custodian of this trust fund, and members of the Board of Trustees must be approved by the school board in order to award scholarships in conformity with set criteria and guidelines.
Mr. President, I move to approve the renewal appointments of Mr. Al Sufferin and Ms. Emile Saint Pierre to the Ethel Scheffner Board of Trustees.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Weber, a second by Mrs. Boudreaux. Any discussion?
Mr. President, as Chairman of the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund Board of Trustees, I'd like to provide some background and an update. Ms. Scheffner was a former teacher of longstanding with this school system. She left a major part of proceeds from her estate to be applied to a scholarship fund for students graduating from this school system. Since its inception in the 1990s, the Ethel Scheffner Scholarship Fund has awarded more than 180 scholarships totaling more than a half a million dollars. In fact, the Board of Trustees will be meeting tomorrow morning, and will be considering four new scholarship applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. If no other discussion, please cast your vote. And those two appointees are approved. Next up is 4.03, which is approval of student accident insurance broker. The Risk Management Department solicits brokers on a three-year cycle. We are in year three of three. Requests for qualifications were sought from several brokers through advertisements. The district received three responses to the request of qualifications. The Risk Management and Insurance Committee members reviewed and evaluated statements of qualifications based upon the criteria set forth in the request for qualifications. The selection of Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, Inc., provides the district with high-quality services. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the selection of the Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services Incorporated as the student accident insurance broker.
Second. So I have a motion by Mrs. Boudreaux, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item is approved. Next item on the agenda is 4.04, which is St. Charles Parish Public Schools' Long-Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletic Facilities, Phase Two. The district recently completed Phase One of the Long-Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletic Facilities. Stakeholder input was sought from various groups, including, but not limited to, coaches, administrators, athletic directors, students, parents, and community members regarding physical education and athletic facility needs at all school-based sites. After district administration, the school board prioritized needs. A final Phase Two, St. Charles Parish Public Schools' Long-Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletic Facilities was developed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the parish's long-range plan for physical education and athletic facilities for Phase Two.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any board discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that in the event that the board approves the plan, that copies of the plan be put in the libraries at each of the schools, individual schools, and also in all of the public libraries in the parish, so that they may be reviewed by the public.
Yes, sir. Administration will do so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Dr. Ortling. Anyone else?
None.
If none, please cast your vote. And that item is approved. Next item is 4.05, St. Charles Parish Public Schools' Safety and Security Enhancement Plan. The district contracted with Safe Havens International to conduct a comprehensive safety and security assessment of all district programs and all district sites. The final report including recommendations and recommendations to enhance the district's current safety and security program. After review and prioritization of recommendations by district administration, the school board and legal counsel, a St. Charles Parish Public Schools' Safety and Security Enhancement Plan was developed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the district's school safety and security enhancement plan at an estimated cost of $2,277,500.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to add that this $2,277,500 is in excess of previous committed money towards safety of our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Mr. President, the same as with the athletic facilities, I'd like to ask that copies of the updated plan be placed in all of the public school libraries and in the public libraries throughout the parish.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Understood, Ms. Smith. Will do.
Mr. President, I also just want to make sure that we recognize the hard work that Mr. Cade Rogers did on this, along with the Sheriff's Office, and their commitment to the safety of our students and our teachers and our staff. That is a number-one priority for District Three, and I'm pretty much, pretty much sure that it's for the rest of the board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Anyone else? If none, please cast your vote. And that item is approved unanimously by this board. Next up is 4.06, which is the Booty Adult Learning Center Property Sale and Real Estate Process. In accordance with Procedure 3.3.3.3.5, the board has established a process for real estate sale of property declared as no longer needed for public school purposes. The former Booty Adult Learning Center site located at 13771 Highway 631 in Booty is currently being leased and no longer being used by the school system. The following provisions are necessary to meet the requirements of Procedure 3.3.5. The school board should declare the property as no longer needed for school purposes and is intent to sell the property. The school board shall declare it that it is in the best interest to contract for services of a real estate broker. The school board shall select a real estate broker through an informal process led by the superintendent. Number four, the school board shall set the sale price for the first time of the property is offered at 100% of the appraised value, at 85% of the appraised value on the second attempt, and 80% of the appraised value on the third attempt, and no minimum for each subsequent attempt to sell. The superintendent is authorized to include in the contract with the real estate broker any additional items deemed necessary and may accept any offer which meets or exceeds the minimum sale price. The board shall approve the sale of the property in accordance with the terms of the accepted offer. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the sale of the Booty Adult Learning Center property through the outlined real estate process at a cost of no more than 5% of the sale price.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Is any discussion? I just hope I don't have to read that procedure again. If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next up on the agenda is 4.07, which is Change Order Number One, Satellite Center Roof Replacement. The contract modifications include in Change Order Number One as follows. Utilize road bat insulation in lieu of spray foam insulation at a savings of $9,885.81. Also to utilize standard roof color in lieu of custom color for a savings of $9,450. The total credit of all changes is $19,335.81. Approved, this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Change Order Number One for the Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project at a savings of $19,335.81.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next up is 4.08, Bid Authorization Request for Harry Hurst Middle School HVAC Replacement Project. The Harry Hurst Middle School HVAC Replacement is an approved project of the 2023-24 Long-Range Major Maintenance Capital Improvements Plan. S R III funds will be utilized to complete the project. The construction plans for the HVAC replacement have been completed by the engineer and are ready for bid. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid authorization request for the Harris Middle School HVAC Replacement Project.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 4.09, is Additional Workdays for Paraeducators. Paraeducators serve as a critical daily support for teaching and learning in our classrooms all year long. To ensure they are equipped with ongoing professional development throughout the school year, having paraeducators work the same amount of days as teachers would allow for a seamless instructional support, coordinated professional development opportunities, and more collaboration between teachers and paraeducators. These additional professional development days would allow paraeducators to learn curriculum supports, behavior management strategies, and instructional technology used alongside teachers. This proposal would increase the number of days worked by paraeducators from 180 to 183 days annually. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve three additional workdays per year for paraeducators at an investment of $150,000.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion, excuse me, by Mr. Gregson, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next up is 4.10, Expanded School-Based Mental Health Program Proposal. An update of the district's mental health program and a proposed to expand the program was presented to the board during the March 24, 2023 Board Retreat. The board agreed to consider the proposal at an upcoming board meeting. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the Expanded School-Based Mental Health Program Proposal at an investment of $276,000.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item is approved. Next is 4.11, the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Restructuring Plan. To sustain efficient operations and provide a safe, welcoming environment for students to experience world-class arts events, a staffing restructuring plan for the Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center is needed. This agenda items are reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Restructuring Plan at an investment of $193,679.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to add that there are 365 days in the year. This facility was used 311 of those.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. That's cars there all the time. Okay. All right. Please cast And that item passes. Next is 4.12, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to receive the personnel items as presented to the board.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion?
Mr. O'Quinn, we do have two members in our audience that I'd like to give special recognition to who were recently recommended as administrative monitor and assistant principal. We have Mr. Rit Grau, who will be the administrative monitor at the Satellite Center, and Mr. Michael Sealy, who will be the assistant principal at Luling Elementary School. Congratulations to both of our leaders.
Thank you, Dr. Ortling. If not, please cast your vote. No more discussion. And 4.12 Personnel Items is adopted. Next is 4.13, Proposal Acceptance Website and/or Mobile App Redesign and Hosting. The district's current website and mobile app were designed in 2015, and the previous vendor has been acquired by a new company. The Stakeholder Investment System Base Team has identified the redesign of the website and mobile app for modern functionality as a priority to be included in Phase 10 of the Long-Range Strategic Action Plan. Proposals received from five vendors for the redesign of the website and evaluated. The top three vendors were invited to present to the Technology Committee of the Board. The final score sheet is attached. This agenda item was reviewed at the Technology Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal C and E of the Board's Current Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I recommend that we approve the proposal from final site for the redesign and three-year hosting of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools' website and/or mobile app.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mr. Cody. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.13 is adopted. 4.14 is Official Journal for Fiscal Year 2023 and 2024. Louisiana Revised Statute 43:141 requires that each school board select an official journal for a term not to exceed one year. The newspaper shall have been published in an office physically located in St. Charles Parish for a period of five years preceding the selection. Shall not have missed during that period as many as three consecutive issues unless caused by fire, flood, strike, or natural disaster. They shall have maintained a general paid circulation in St. Charles Parish for five consecutive years prior to the selection, and shall have been entered in a U.S. post office in St. Charles Parish under a second-class mailing permit in that parish for a period of five consecutive years prior to the selection. At this time only, the St. Charles Herald Guide meets the qualification to be selected as the Board's Official Journal. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with Goal E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the St. Charles Herald Guide as the school board's official journal for the 2023-2024 fiscal year at an approximate cost of $15,000.
A second.
Seven motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreaux. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that the Herald Guide has served as the official journal for the district for a number of years. The addition of the digital newspaper contains a tremendous amount of information and other things about the school system that serves to enhance what they do as an official journal. So I'd just like to commend the Herald Guide for the addition of the digital newsletter because it's being read by a lot of people throughout the district, and I get a lot of, from various individuals, a lot of accolades for that piece.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 4.15, which is the approval of- Next is 4.15, which is the Approval of Audit Firm for Fiscal Year 23 Audit. State law requires the Board to hire an independent audit firm to conduct its yearly financial statement and compliance audit. The firm of Laporte CPAs has conducted the audit for the last three years, and the Board wishes to hire the firm for the audit for the Fiscal Year 23 Audit. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve hiring Laporte CPAs to conduct the Fiscal Year 2023 Financial Audit at a cost of $62,000.
A second.
Seven motion by Mr. Suffren, a second by Ms. Boudreau, any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that this not only covers the external audit, but the state now requires agreed-upon procedures to be completed, and this engagement also covers those agreed-upon procedures as well.
Thank you, Mr. Suffren. Anyone else? If not, please cast your vote. And that item is approved. Next on the agenda is 4.16, which is the Recruitment and Retention Payments to District Employees. A projected general fund surplus for fiscal year 2023 allows the district to enhance its retention and recruitment efforts through a one-time payment for employees. Administration processes a one-time $1,500 payment to full-time and permanent part-time employees excluding the superintendent to be paid in October of 2023. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with goals B and C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the Recruitment and Retention Payments to Employees as you have presented at an approximate cost of $3,391,000 in fiscal year 2024.
A second.
Seven motion by Mr. Suffren, a second by Mrs. Boudreau, any discussion?
Just a point of clarification. Mr. President, just a point of clarification. What we're talking about here in terms of a board subsidized payment is in addition to the payment that the state is giving, and the state is not giving a salary increase but just a stipend. So we want the public to know that the school district independently is paying for this pay raise for employees.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? And that item passes. Next on the agenda is 4.17 Pay Raises for Permanent Full-Time and Part-Time District Employees for Fiscal Year 2023 and 2024. In order to retain and attract the most highly qualified employees and remain competitive, the district has identified a need to increase compensation for permanent full-time and permanent part-time district employees. The district proposed a 4% and a $2,000 district-funded pay raise for permanent full-time district employees excluding the superintendent, and a 4% district-funded pay raise for permanent part-time district employees. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with goals B and C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve a 4% and $2,000 pay raise for permanent full-time district employees, and a 4% raise for permanent part-time district employees effective fiscal year 2023-2024 as you have presented, and the approximate cost is $8,819,000.
A second.
Seven motion by Mr. Suffren, a second by Mrs. Boudreau, any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to point out, as in the previous one Mr. Smith did, is this is 100% local investment in every single employee that we have here because the team from top to bottom matters. We really appreciate all the hard work that they put in 365 days a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Anyone else? And 4.17 is adopted. Next up, 4.18 is Approval of Letter of Support for Diamond Green Diesel. Valero Refining New Orleans LLC and Diamond Green Diesel LLC will be seeking to expand Foreign Trade Subzone 124A upon application with the Federal Trade Commission for certain tanker dedicated to Diamond Green at the IMTT site in St. Rose. Expansion of the Foreign Trade Subzone will allow Diamond Green to increase its importing of certain raw materials which will be converted into diesel fuel without having to pay import duties, thereby making the endeavor financially viable. Expansion of the Foreign Trade Subzone would allow Diamond Green to be exempted from having to pay ad valorem taxes on the inventory held at the site. However, Diamond Green is willing to pay the applicable ad valorem tax in return for the support of the local taxing authority of the expansion of the Foreign Trade Subzone. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve sending a letter of support for Diamond Green Diesel's request for the Foreign Trade Subzone Expansion.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Suffren, a second by Mrs. Boudreau, any discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to recognize a special member in the audience tonight, Ms. Stevie Cravetta, who is Valero's Public Affairs Manager. Obviously, we all know Stevie and her commitment to this community and previously to this school system, so thank you for being here, Ms. Cravetta.
Thank you, Dr. Orling. Any other discussion? And 4.18 is approved. Next is 4.19 Accounts Payable for the Month of May 2023. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public fund under its jurisdiction. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with goal C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of May 2023 at a total amount of $3,967,745.
A second.
Seven motion by Mr. Suffren, a second by Mrs. Boudreau, any discussion? And that item passes so we can pay our bills. Next is 4.20 Superintendent's Evaluation and Contract Review. The Board has conducted a superintendent's evaluation for the 2022-23 school year during an executive session of the special board meeting on June 5, 2023, and considers its performance proficient by meeting identified performance benchmarks. The Board will consider Amendment 4 to the superintendent's contract as provided.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve Amendment 4 to the superintendent's contract in an amount of an additional $5,000 to $13,000 annually.
A second.
Seven motion by Mr. Suffren, a second by Mrs. Boudreau, any discussion? And 4.20 is approved. Next up is Standing Committee Reports. If there's any chair of any standing committee that'd like to give a report on their committee meetings or anything going on with their committees, can please do so at this time.
Mr. President, the Technology Committee, which includes Ms. Becky Weber, Mr. Scott Cody, and myself, we met on Monday, June 12, and discussed one item, a new website which includes the school district's website and all school websites. This was approved earlier this evening. We evaluated the website proposals extensively at the Technology Committee meetings on April 24th, May 8th, and again on Monday. Our goal is to launch a new district school website around the beginning of 2024. I'd like to thank Ms. Weber, Ms. McMillan, Ms. Stide, Dr. Orling, and Mr. Cody for their work in evaluating the proposals from the five vendors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. John Smith, Mr. Ray Gregson, met on Monday, June 12. Four items were reviewed and brought to the Board this evening, including a restructuring plan for the LPAC that was presented by Ms. Darmika Green, in which it was learned that the number of school performances and/or rehearsals increased from 96 in the 2019-2020 school year to more than 370 this past school year. The plan was passed unanimously, continuing our commitment to a state-of-the-art performing arts facility for not just our students but our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. Alexander, and Mrs. Boudreau, met on Monday, June 12, 2023. The committee covered nine items. Six of the nine items came before and were considered by the full board during this meeting and were approved. Those six items are the Official Journal for Fiscal Year 2023-2024, approval of the Audit Firm for Fiscal Year 2023, recruitment and retention payments to district employees, pay raises for permanent full-time and part-time district employees for fiscal year 2023-2024, approval of a letter of support for Diamond Green Diesel, and the accounts payable for the month of May 2023. The other three items that the committee discussed were interim budget for fiscal year 2024, which will be adopted at the July Board Meeting. There will also be a public hearing on the interim budget held prior to the July Board Meeting. We also discussed an increase in hourly pay for temporary workers, and we also discussed strategies to improve academic performance and the funding for implementation of those. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Suffren.
Mr. President, the Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday, June 12, 2023. That committee consists of you, Mr. Al Suffren, and me. We had six items on our agenda, and all six of those items were approved tonight, and those items are, one, the long-range plan for physical education and athletic facilities for Phase 2; number two, our school safety and security enhancement plan; the third item was the boutique adult learning center property sale and real estate process; the fourth one was change order number one for the Satellite Center roof replacement; the fifth item was the engineer recommendation for the Destrahan High School and Hornville High School baseball and softball turf installation; and the last item was bid authorization request for Harrah Hurst Middle School HVAC replacement project. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Transportation Committee did not meet, and I will refrain from making a joke about that. Thank you.
Mr. President, the Legislative Committee met last Monday to review the legislative action as a result of this year's legislative session. As you know, this was a fiscal session, and this is usually the session that many school districts dread because the financial impacts that result from some of the bills that are passed during the session hugely impact schools in a negative way. We were very fortunate this year that the negative impact, financial negative impact on the school district was minimal, and that some of the big-ticket items that could have really meant a big negative impact for the district were defeated. We do expect that they will be coming back up again during future sessions of the legislature, but for right now, we're okay, in particular, the Education Savings Account and one or two other bills that could have had a tremendous negative impact on the district. So we do want to extend to the superintendent, to our Public Relations Director Regina McMillan, and to our lobbyists, we want to extend our kudos to them for a very, very thorough and good job done in monitoring the efforts of the legislature and being there to testify before the legislature and provide critical input that helped legislators come to conclusions that certain actions could have negatively impacted school districts across the state. So I thank the Board for making the decisions to hire a lobbyist this year again, and I think that that was a tremendous move on the part of the Board, and we look forward to the next session of the legislature going forward, which will, at that time, will be much, much more intense.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment Committee did not meet on June 12. Therefore, we do not have any agenda items to report on.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Weber. The Risk Management and Insurance Committee did meet. We had our monthly legal update, and we also had the selection of the broker of the student accident insurance, and that concludes my report. Next on the agenda is 5.02, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hurricane season extends through November. The state and parish emergency operations centers have distributed information about hurricane preparedness and response. Over the years, St. Charles Parish Public Schools has worked closely with our parish Emergency Operations Center to make sure that this school system has a comprehensive plan for preparing and responding to hurricane events. Please be prepared throughout the season and make a plan in case one threatens our area. The Business Office once again received a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from Governmental Finance Officers Association, and the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International for the 2022-2023 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. These certificates represent the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. On behalf of the Board and the school system, I'd like to extend a congratulations and a thank you to our CFO, Mr. Ronald White, members of his department, and you, the Board, as well, for supporting their department. Congratulations, Mr. White. St. Charles Parish Public Schools is hosting several summer learning opportunities for our students. Our high school summer program provides opportunities for high school students to earn initial Carnegie credits or to recover previously attempted coursework. The high school summer program, which began on Thursday, June 8, will last until Friday, July 14. The Boost Summer Program for Students in Grades Pre-Kindergarten through 8th Grade will provide eligible students 12 days of quality learning experiences in ELA, Math, and Enrichment. and enrichment. The Boost Program also incorporates a fun activity each day. These fun activities include activities like a live band, a cartoonist, and even a dance party. Our Young Riders Camp for students exiting grades 3 through 8 is being held at DHS from June 12 through the 15th. Our Engineering Camp for students exiting 4th and 5th grade will be held June 19 through the 23rd at Destrahan High School. And while students are enjoying their summer or participating in these learning opportunities, our teachers and administrators, as well as central office staff, are busy preparing for the new school year. Hundreds of teachers are attending professional development sessions on topics such as the science of reading, English, science, and social studies. When you see teachers and administrators this summer, and all educators, please thank them for their focus on continuous improvement of teaching and learning. The annual youth rally backpack giveaway for St. Charles Parish students and parents will take place on Saturday, July 29, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon in the Raymond K. Smith Middle School and Satellite Center parking lots. The rally is sponsored by St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, St. Charles Parish Department of Community Services, a safe place of St. Charles, blessed to be a blessing, United Way of St. Charles, and St. Charles Parish Public Schools. This year's event will be a drive-through, will be a drive-through, school supply giveaway to the first 600 St. Charles Parish residents. This is a great kickoff to the new school year. Hope to see you there. And then finally, I want to personally thank you, the Board, for your leadership and investment in our most important asset, our employees. By approving a substantial increase in compensation earlier this evening, for continuing to prioritize safety and security by approving our Safe Schools Enhancement Plan, as well as making a significant investment to modernize, upgrade, and enhance our PE and athletic facilities by approving Phase 2, the Long Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletics, thank you sincerely for your commitment to excellence demonstrated by these investments. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any objection? We stand adjourned.